Okay, all right, it worked. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. If I could ask Village Clerk H. Schmidt to take role call?
Trustee Barowski.
Here.
Trustee Chris Meyer.
Here.
Trustee Michio.
Here.
Trustee Tanucci.
Here.
Trustee President Jacob.
Here. Okay, then, we need a motion to let trustee O'Reilly attend.
So moved.
Uh, moved by trustee Barowski, seconded by trustee Tanucci. Role call?
Trustee Barowski.
Aye.
Trustee Tanucci.
Aye.
Trustee Chris Meyer.
Aye.
Trustee Michio.
Aye.
All right, welcome to the meeting, Bobby. All right, I'll rise for pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, welcome everyone to this very chilly Tuesday night, our second meeting in January, the last day of January. Uh, the very first thing on the agenda is homeowners associations. I see that Jeff Wilson is on remotely, first one on the list, prior to us. Jeff, do you have anything to share with us? You're muted, by the way, too.
Right now, okay. Yes, first of all, thanks for inviting me back. I wasn't able to make the first invitation, so I was really pleased to receive the invitation to come to this meeting. One of the things I was gonna ask about, which we have talked about before, is the progress with the property there on the Oman Farm, and I was really pleased today to get an email from Greg Jackson showing pictures of the demolition that's currently in place and discussion from the owner of the property about the progress. So, I said, okay, that's great, and good timing, because I was gonna ask that very question at the meeting tonight. So really pleased to see that that's finally taken place. It's been, uh, it's been on the agenda for a while. The other thing, a number of my homeowners have asked me about the widening of Apptekisik Road, and in particular whether that would have any impact on our entrance. We have an entrance off of our subdivision onto Apptekisik, and if by understanding the way they do construction like this, they always keep, um, uh, keep your entrances open so that we wouldn't have to use our entrance off of eighty-three for all of our coming and going. And, um, so that was the question I've had from a number of homeowners, and I wasn't able to find out anything from the county's website, so I was just curious if anybody happened to know how that works.
Uh, Jeff, can you answer that?
Yeah, the county policy, Jeff, you're exactly right, that they maintain entrances. Um, I don't know if you're familiar with it or can picture it in your mind, but when they're doing these road project, projects, they have the, those green signs that say, you know, row here, driveway here. Um, the county's not far enough along to actually have detailed plans of what that's gonna look like, like how they're gonna stage construction and things like that, but that is their policy to keep those open.
Okay.
So, if, if, when that information is, is available, I'll share it with manager Jackson. I'm sure he'll get it back to you.
Okay, yeah, and also, as they do widen it, you know, our, we have some of our, our mailbox entrance comes out, you know, somewhere close to where the road, road is, and I, so I'm thinking if it's widening, it might somehow have some impact on our, on our mailbox entrance. So, but again, until we see their plans and have a chance to look at that, we, that's just, uh, that's just a question, and, uh...
Yeah, and typically they relocate those mailbox turnouts, because for safety reasons, they want the post office vehicles to be able to pull off to the road while they're stopped.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, and, and the third thing, of course, is we had an incident, I wanna say about two weeks ago, where one of our homeowners spotted a couple of cars in the subdivision, like at three o'clock in the morning, driving kinda suspiciously and parked outside one or two of the homes. So, we alerted all of our residents, reiterated the public safety warnings that the village has put out, and that the sheriff's department has put out about keeping lights on, keeping cars in your garage, or if they're not in the garage, certainly have them locked and no valuables in them, and, uh, and that sort of thing. And I know many of us have all, uh, have lighting on our house on all sides that are on all night long, and, um, so we, we feel that that helps, but on the other hand, you know, people are feeling a little, a little on edge, I guess is probably the best way to put it. And, uh, so I just thank the village for the, uh, being so conscientious about this and keeping us all in mind, um, as we're all facing these rather difficult times.
Yeah, we, we have lieutenant Keith Kaiser here tonight, too, so he'll probably address that when he gets a chance to talk to you. Jeff?
Okay, and that's all I have, then. I'll just, uh, I think I'll just listen to the rest of the discussion, then.
Yeah, thanks for being here tonight, and thanks for bringing those items forward. We really appreciate it, and thanks for volunteering to be an HOA president.
Thank you.
Uh, we have two more HOAs that may be here, is, is it Carl Ryan and Roberta Baggett from Oakwood Creek here online?
Right, yeah.
All right, okay.
So, my name's Carl Ryan, and, uh, with me is Adam Glitt, and also Roberta Baggett. And, um, we're here not really in any official capacity, our homeowners association has sort of been a transition, and, um, we're hoping that within the next sixty days or so, that we'll have some formal officers, uh, in place to, uh, to present to you. So, uh, but at this point, uh, any correspondence or whatever can be directed to me or to, uh, to Roberta, if she has my contact information. Uh, if you don't have it, you can, I will give it to you. So, uh, Roberta has some prepared questions and remarks that, uh, she has, and, uh, when she's done, I'm not sure if Adam has any comments, he would like some.
Jeff, please go ahead.
So, Keith here, I'd like to thank Lieutenant Kaiser, he attended a meeting with our neighborhood to address the burglaries that have occurred in the village in the past few weeks, and he gave us very good tips about how to protect our, our property from intruders, so we do appreciate that. Uh, one of our neighbors, Karen Trinkinshu, also wanted to say thank you to the staff, the support staff, whenever she calls, uh, she said either Sherry or Margarita has been very responsive and knowledgeable. And I agree with Karen, because whenever I call with a question or concern, everyone's quick to get back to me, so that's, that's appreciated. Um, I also personally want to thank Melissa and Greg for, um, how do I say this, for, for finally coming up with the promotion to my neighborhood and our yard, not just my yard, but everybody else down the hill. And, um, I do appreciate that. I don't think it's, um, a dumb deal, I think come spring, he's gonna put that sprinkler back out, we're gonna start all over again, so I certainly will appreciate any ongoing efforts to alleviate the problem. Another neighbor of ours, Andy Rills, he, he said that, um, he mentioned that the stripes on Oakwood Road have faded, and that maybe a result of, um, coating you guys put on, you know, to, to protect the roads, I don't know, but seems wondering if maybe they could be re-tainted. Um, he wanted to also thank you for addressing the signs that he wanted fixed, because I don't know anything about that, but he did.
Stop signs and a few others.
Um, following up, and I'm sure you, you heard, um, from him about this, well, the illegal U-turns from Route eighty-three onto Oakwood Road. Um, apparently out of the village's jurisdiction, uh, he spoke with the Lake County representatives about changing the, the light sequence, maybe leaving it longer for the last turn onto Gilmar, so that it wouldn't be awkward for people to try to make that U-turn, and what else did he say? Oh, he said, um, the, the Lake County representative said that installing a no U-turn after a right turn sign on Route eighty-three would be more difficult, because Route eighty-three is supposedly a state road.
It is.
Um, so, I just want to give you an update from what he said on there. Um, what else is going on? Oh, the biggest concern, Jeff, the residents have, and I've lived in my home, I think, for twenty-four years, and every two years this comes up, uh, we have two stop signs on either side of Oakwood Circle, and people ignore them. Not everybody, most people stop, but there are some that just blow right through them. And when I'm walking and I'm riding a bike and I see that, the first thing I think of is, what if a little kid is on their bike? And, and, you know, the driver can't see them. Um, there has been talk about putting speed bumps or speed humps or something, um, on either side of the sign. Uh, from, uh, a memo I got from our HOA president last May, apparently there was a discussion that happened there, and, um, there was, was happening, considering a change to the village code about, um, allowing speed bumps. I just wonder if, you know, if there's been any update on that, or even if the village has access to that sort of thing, that could possibly install a new position made to do that.
She's currently looking at options for various methods for traffic calming, and speed bumps and speed tables are, are just some of those. We're still waiting for some data that was gathered as part of a beta test that took place over the fall. We're hoping to have that information, the village engineer is waiting for some additional data for our upcoming February meeting, which will give us a, if it's an effective tool or not.
Is that something that could practically be installed, I mean, with snow plows and things like that, speed bumps?
All right, I think our village engineer would be the first one to say that that's always a potential problem with snow, with the, with the bumps and snow plowing, uh, and concerns with that, and since, uh, Oakwood Creek is, uh, our public roads, uh, I can say from dealing with our snow removal crew that, you know, they, they certainly have concerns about that, as they do with boulders in the right of way, and, so...
Well, to reiterate, I moved in recently into the neighborhood nine or ten months ago, and another neighbor moved in, and we have young children being in the new neighbors, and we live on Oakwood Road, and the traffic and the speeding is definitely a concern for, for having very young children, and I don't wanna see something being done after someone gets hit by a car.
Yep.
And that's the biggest thing, we've lived on this road, we moved this up from the city, and the people definitely see out there more, maybe than the major cities, who do something about it, and we have, there are speed bumps in the city of St. Louis, and they have plows, and they're able to do it. So, I mean, they're definitely able to do it, or they have speed bumps, so there's little, so it's definitely able to be done. I know, like, my parents live in a park, they're able to do it there, and I know, like, one, one of the parks over there, they actually take them out of the dirt, they're actually temporary ones, they take out and they put back, I don't know if that's something, there's a lot of ways of doing it. I don't want it to be done with people speeding down this twenty-five mile per hour street. And to me, I don't know, you know, I'm not a human speed checker, but like, you know, they're going for it.
Speeding has been, and the board, the board has brought it to our attention multiple times, speeding. We've had it, we've had issues up on Osage, up on the north end of town, we were able to put in some additional signage, which slowed things down.
Can I just ask one question? Is it, um, is it on Oakwood where the speeding's happening, or is it the stop signs being blown off, or is it inside the subdivision?
Oakwood.
Oakwood, okay.
Oakwood Road, those people and a lot of them are landing type of people.
Got it.
But also, it's not from our own neighborhood.
Well, I mean, so this is the interesting thing, it's, it's all our fellow residents that are blowing off the stop signs speeding, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
But, you know, they, uh, I, I think, and I used to walk my dog down there all the time, for the purpose of stop signs, just for the ability to get to, to the stop signs. And so speeding is a big issue when blowing those stop signs, you know, about additional police protection. I mean, it's a money-making type of opportunity there.
Yeah, we have, we, our resources are limited, and I could cite you, twenty more speeding areas we could put police officers at. So maybe it could be a short-term thing, and maybe we increase the patrol, but long-term it's not a solution, because we could spend all the money.
I always tell people, ladies and gentlemen, be careful, those, those folks, that's deer. And at night, like, you know, I told my friend who came out visiting, said, we went up to pick up pizza, came back, I saw a buck on the side of the road, I'm like, you're gonna have a bad day.
George, you raise your hand.
Yeah, it's, it's good that the village is pursuing this, I don't know, in fashion, and maybe an article could be written in the bridge, again, as spring approaches, to remind residents, as summer comes, spring comes, the kids will be out on the street, and reinforce all the families, that they have children, be respectful of everyone's children.
Thank you.
Is there room for a speed horse somewhere? Boxes that are...
Yeah.
Home time things, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I would just, thought that was a little bit...
Maybe put some of this stuff deer.
I think so.
Okay.
No.
I don't think so, but anyways, good idea. All right, what else? We'll keep ourselves moving, so thank, thank you for being here. Anything else?
No, I don't think so.
All right, thank you for bringing that to our attention, and we appreciate it, and thanks for being here. So, we have one more, um, HOA, if they're here, from Edgewood Pond, as it, Amit Kumar from Edgewood Pond here, anyone from Edgewood Pond here? I take that as, uh, no. Now we do have time for public comment from both online and here. Anyone that have, in the room, have any public comment? Is there anybody, anybody online that has public comment? We didn't receive any written comments, so...
Yes, we did.
We did.
Just before the meeting, Mike Elliott, um, uh, is asking for an update from the sheriff's department onto the activity that was happening on Cuba Road, and there may be some limitations on what can be offered on those lines.
Okay.
Someone's already speaking, but before you...
So, yeah, so why don't we have, can you come up here, lieutenant Kaiser, maybe come closer to the, so what was the, repeat that, please?
Um, Mike Elliott has been a complaint on some activities on the road. Um, we recognize that there's limitations on what we wanna discuss, starts to the... We do know that the sheriff's department's paying, paying attention to trespassers and, and unauthorized activity in the Cuba Road, across Conglacito Stone area.
Yeah, I, without compromising any investigation, we have put several man-hours towards the complaints off of Cuba Road, and we are taking, uh, proactive measures to solve the, solve the incidents that are occurring.
Yeah, so, Mike, I know you're out there, so...
I'm happy to give my call.
Okay, yeah, um, maybe village manager Jackson will catch up with you then, yeah?
It means, I don't know if you saw his mic number.
Okay, okay. And also, you were gonna, do you have a public safety update for us, or...
Uh, well, it's been a busy...
Oh, yes.
...couple of weeks here, uh, but we have been, we've seen this increase in burglaries throughout the community, and just in the last week now, we've met with three, I know, three homeowners associations, we're gonna meet with another one...
Thursday.
...eight o'clock tonight.
Oh, that's right, tonight, yep.
Uh, so, we're just trying to get the information out to people, some safety tips for your house and neighborhood, but the biggest thing is, if you see something, say something. So if you see those cars parked in your neighborhood at three o'clock in the morning, call the police, because we'll get here as soon as we can, and we'll investigate, and see why they're out there, and it just might be a neighbor's car parked down the street. So, everybody's hyper vigilant right now, and it's a good thing for the police, for us, so that we can try to stop the, the activities, but I know that everybody's on edge. Um, we have increased controls in the village when we have ma, additional manpower to do so, um, so we are taking steps to try to curb this and get around it. Luckily, cold weather and snow, criminals don't like, because it leaves evidence, and you're cold to know.
As, as I said, you know, Mr. President, uh, I don't think everybody realizes, but Sergeant Kaiser's now a lieutenant, so he was promoted, edulented. Had the opportunity to sit down with Lieutenant Kaiser and the new deputy chief for the patrol division, uh, last week, I think it was, and had some discussion on some of the concerns we have and how we're addressing them. Thanks, Keith.
Any, any questions? No, that's that?
I have a good question. But the information that's gone out, have residents been calling more often out of concern?
Anecdotally, from what I've heard?
Yes.
Good. So, the mess, the word's getting out, and, and that's a good message, too, to keep it up.
Thank you.
I had something else, too, didn't you?
Yes.
I was in love, she dropped the mail in.
Oh, really?
And she threw it in my recycling bin.
Oh, wow.
She stole some of my mail, and like, she came all the way to our neighborhood, she dumped it in my bin, and my neighbor caught it.
Wow.
And I saw it, and now you have it.
Another thing I just wanna address is, like, this isn't just localized Long Grove, you know, this is happening throughout the area, so it's, I, I don't think, I'm glad that people are thinking about it, it's on the forefront, but just, no, it's not just here, it's happening in Burnee, it's happening in, uh, Bannanburn, it's happening in, uh, Lincolnshire, so it's not just something that's localized to Long Grove.
Good, but bad.
Yeah, and it's bad, but good, but, uh, yes. All right, thank you, thank you for that report.
Thank you.
Our, um, chief Sagala, are you gonna give us a report? Thank you for...
I have a handout.
Handout?
Everybody gets a handout. Thank you.
I wanted a trophy, though.
Thank you, chief.
Forget that remark, it's trouble.
Thank you.
All right, good evening, President Jacob and trustees, appreciate the time to share our report for 2022 of the incidents that we had in the Long Grove Fire District. So your firefighters responded to 1,931 incidents in '22, are on an upward streak, six percent over the previous year, an increase of sixteen and a half percent since 2020, and an increase of 26.64 percent since 2016. Sixty-four percent of those calls are for emergency medical service, and thirty-one percent of our emergency medical calls were at our nursing homes. Sixteen percent of our responses are to our neighboring agencies where we provide automatic and mutual aid, and that was for 309 times during the previous year. About twenty percent of our calls are overlap, meaning that while we're on one incident, another incident comes in, and that's what makes this neighboring jurisdiction relationship so important to us, is that we're able to help each other and cover each other's calls while we're tied up on another one. Less than one percent of our calls for the year are actual structure fires. We did have one extra alarm fire in the village of Kildere, uh, which resulted in a very high dollar loss, so our $2022 fire loss was 5.32 million. Um, as you know, our district protects, uh, parts of Deer Park, Hawthorne Woods, Kildere, Lincolnshire, and Long Grove, Long Grove being by far the most jurisdictional area that we have. We also have some unincorporated areas of Lake and Cook Counties, and we cover about fourteen square miles and about 12,000 residents. As you know, we protect the Kemper campus, which is our largest office complex, we have four country clubs, four schools, several nursing homes, living, and of course, our historic downtown, which we take a great deal and pride protecting, and appreciate that we have sprinkler ordinance in the, in the village. In addition to, uh, our fire and emergency medical incidents, uh, both those seventy-two were motor vehicle accidents last year, uh, two of those had fatalities. And, as I said, sixty-nine percent of our calls were in the village of Long Grove, that's our biggest one, and of all the calls that we had, I put a picture in of the one that gave us the most odor ID of the year, was when we digged a little fawn who fell into a window sill, and firefighters were able to, uh, get some webbing around it and get her out of there, and away happily into the woods. So just as a recap, our busiest month for the year is July, where we had 206 calls, and two-thirds of our calls come between the hours of seven a.m. and...
Seven p.m.
Our busiest time of the day is between one and two p.m. So, as you saw with the little deer, a lot of our residents call on us when they don't know who else to call for things, so ten percent of our calls are actual non-emergency service calls, and we also take a great deal of pride in serving the people who are there and need somebody and don't know who else to call. So that's just a brief recap, we had an extremely busy and productive year. I should also point out that our fire prevention bureau has a great relationship with the village and with the building inspectors here, uh, they all do a great job in helping to keep the community safe. That's all I have, is there anything that I can answer?
Can I just ask a question? Why do you think one to two p.m. is the busiest time of the day?
I wish I had that answer. If I did, we would work on trying to reduce that during that time.
Got it, got it.
It's, uh, no, no real trend that we could find in there, there's no one single type of call it happening, is there?
It just seems like an odd time.
We are all, it's been one and two p.m., I guess, so...
Yeah.
I have a question, is sixty-four percent of the emergency medical service, would it help, um, your success, our success, if we have CCR training at home, you know, in our...
We, we have, we offer monthly CPR and first aid, and we're actually just starting a, a cooperative program with the Park District to enhance that.
Yeah.
But we're always looking for those opportunities, and if anybody has interest in attending one of ours, call the fire district, they'll have available dates for that.
Yeah, I just didn't know, so I was like, thank you, like, if you have more people...
It, it could, you could fix yourself, and you didn't need us, that'd be okay, but...
Oh, geez.
But that's more than you could do, we, we don't mind coming out to help you out.
I'm proud of my own patient.
Anything else from anyone? I really appreciate you coming here and giving us a report, that was really nice of you, thank you.
See everyone in person.
Yeah, that's even better, right? Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we, uh, we're gonna move right along, we have consent agenda, there are, um, the treasurer's reports on it, the board meeting minutes from the January tenth, uh, meeting, and then there's a, a, uh, intergovernmental agreement with Fremont Township, there's a section of road that, uh, we're not maintaining, but they are, have an intergovernmental agreement, because it's actually in our village to maintain it. We have those three items on the consent agenda, does anyone have any questions, or does somebody wanna make a motion to approve?
Well, I understand that last one, we're just formalizing what is essentially happening anyway.
Correct, right.
So move.
Okay, so, moved by, uh, trustee O'Connor, seconded by, seconded by trustee Michio. Call, please.
Trustee O'Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Michio, aye. Trustee Barowski.
Aye.
Trustee Chris Meyer, aye. Trustee O'Reilly.
Aye.
Trustee Tanucci.
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. Uh, now the next item is the discussion consideration of granting Country Club Meadows... Oh, sorry, the engineers' report's before that, about that. Jeff, you wanna take it away?
All right, thank you. Yeah, um, I know there's a few things on the agenda, so I'll just highlight a few things on the engineers' report. Uh, the Robert Parker Coffin Bridge is the first thing on the report, excuse me. Um, this is in regards to the overheight deterrent, um, and trustee O'Connor is going to lead a discussion under her report, so I will gladly yield to trustee on that. The 2023 road maintenance program, uh, we're beginning to put together the proposed package for that, uh, we had a meeting with President Jacob, trustee O'Connor, and manager Jackson last week to review kind of some preliminary road, roads to include, and we had a great discussion, and some additional questions came up, so we're gonna look at some additional options and bring that forward to the board at the next meeting for formal direction to move that forward, so that, uh, we can get in the queue for bidding the 2023 annual program earlier in the year, which is typically advantageous, that's when contractors are typically, quote-unquote, "most hungry" and giving the best prices. Um, manager Jackson, uh, touched on this earlier, but we're still waiting for a little bit of data from Buffalo Grove, uh, before we complete the, um, analysis of the beta test on Checker Road. The Village Hall Expansion, number five, we're, village is... That's when contractors are typically, quote unquote, "most hungry" and giving the best prices. Um, manager Jackson, uh, touched on this earlier, but we're still waiting for a little bit of data from Buffalo Grove before we complete the analysis of the beta test on Checker Road. The Village Hall Expansion, number five, we're, Village is continuing, working with world architects on the options and seeing what we can do to respond to the various discussion points raised at the last board meeting. Uh, they had come back with a revised, um, concept that came late last week. So that's being digested, uh, before it's, uh, presented to the board. Uh, let's see, um, it's kinda moving down. Number fourteen, uh, Lake Zurich is lining their sanitary sewer on Aptikisik Road. Given the, uh, the tundra we've had here in the last couple of days, not a lot of work has been done. They did get on-site last week to, uh, do some prep work, but, uh, the majority of the work has not started yet due to the weather. So it's, once it starts, which hopefully can start a little bit later this week, I'll keep, uh, manager Jackson apprised. But, uh, that project will be done in about two weeks from when they actually start. Uh, jumping down, just Harvard Chase, number twenty, just to highlight, uh, great meeting with the Harvard Chase executives. We even had, uh, a few of their executives from corporate from Florida join the meeting. They were planning to come up, but, uh, their flight got canceled. That was the, that was the, the day that, uh, the, uh, the system went down. So we had a great meeting with them, uh, to move forward with the native species, uh, um, management and also the, and take care of the dead, dead and dying, excuse me, trees, uh, over there. So we're still waiting for the formal plan from them, but, uh, it was a great productive meeting. And, uh, there, uh, we stressed the importance of starting that maintenance, uh, in the spring, which is the best time to address the native, um, areas. So, uh, those are the, the highlights of the engineer's report. If there's, uh, any, any other questions, uh, you know.
Any questions? Jeff, thank you for the report. Do we need him to stay? Yeah, we do need him to stay. So, yep. You need to stick around.
Can we have someone to make sure that the bids are comprehensive and include any reclamation or anything else that we need to?
Did you hear that?
Yeah, and, uh, that was part of the, uh, discussion, and we, we've already priced that out. So that'll be included in, uh, what we bring forward at the next meeting.
Jeff, did you also want to mention that, uh, Eli and Kildare are interested in doing the joint bid again?
Um, yes, you, you did, uh, wonderful there, manager Jackson. So yes, they are interested in the joint bid, uh, which has typically been advantageous to all three, uh, agencies.
All right, Jeff, thank you.
Yep, end of report.
But, all right, so now, the, the next one is discussions, consideration of granting Country Club Meadows HOA for access to right-of-way for installation of flock cameras. And I'm gonna let project manager Jackson discuss this, introduce it.
The members of the board of the HOA has, have approached the village about the necessity for permitting the use of flock cameras in the subdivision. Flock cameras are a camera system that captures license plates, uh, and it is typically licensed plates that are on a hot sheet, meaning that their car's been reported stolen or the car's been involved with something, but it's out there pretty much widely. And then once that license plate is captured, uh, the, uh, local law enforcement agency is notified that, uh, such a vehicle is within that part of the community, so they can respond. This is an attempt on the, uh, part of Country Club Estates to add a security measure in that area. There are other community or other subdivisions that have, uh, these flock cameras. However, they are a private property and not a public right-of-way. As a result, uh, we, we, itself, the village attorney, our zoning people looked at the code. There's nothing in the code that prohibits the pole and the camera from going up, but we do have issues related to the right-of-way. What, the HOA was provided with the, thanks to the village attorney, templates for, uh, we hold harmless agreements. And, uh, one of the locations, properties adjacent to the right-of-way have signed that. The other one, we still have not received, it is Grove Country Club. Uh, I've offered to assist the HOA in facilitating conversation or getting that document looked at, and myself and the club manager have been playing phone tags since Thursday of last week. Nobody's fault. It was just how the clock ticked and when the paperwork was coming. Um, so what the HOA is asking is for the village board to approve the use of the right-of-way. Uh, if the board chooses to do so, I would, uh, ask the board to make that motion contingent on all right-of-way agreements being secured.
Say that again, to that last clause?
That we would make sure that if the village board approves it, that, uh, nothing goes forward, uh, in any location where we don't have the right-of-way agreement in place.
Thank you.
George?
What will they do with the data that they acquire?
Yeah, they're, well, they're gonna, they'll have license plate information and things like that, and so in case of, uh...
They're gonna be responsible for that data.
It's not gonna be village, right?
And so their issue, as I was a trustee, was cut through traffic. Is this something that they're pursuing?
No, no, it's, it's more, um, because of the recent crimes and burglaries. They wanna make sure that they, hopefully will catch somebody coming through there and hoping to help the sheriff police catch criminal. That's what it's for. And it could be a deterrent, too, if they see the flock cameras. There are some HOAs that have put them up. So if you look around, um, private roads is not a problem because it's their road, their property, and they're doing it. So this is really because of the fact that they want to put the camera in the village right-of-way. We had to have some kind of, uh, you know, an agreement in place to hold us harmless and so forth.
Would they also allow the village to have access to that?
Uh, that's not something we considered at this point. Probably, uh, we also have some state laws that are not totally clear there either, and Vic can respond to that if need be, so.
Well, the, I think first of all, is the utility of it. Um, these cameras are not the type that are, uh, authorized by statute to have automatic evidentiary quality. And so from that perspective, it's not helpful. On the other hand, from a crime detect, detection and investigation perspective, uh, it may be helpful, and that's why it would be really for the sheriff, uh, department to, to contact the HOA or whomever is operating the camera to get that data, and they can make what use of it they can. But unlike, say, the, uh, school, school zone speed cameras or the red light cameras, those have, uh, specifications that are not meant by this, so they're not gonna have the same, uh, uh, value in core.
Yeah, what can I mean?
So, does anyone have any other questions or comments on it?
I, I do have.
I, I, go ahead.
Okay, well, go, well, go ahead, so.
I contacted the company this afternoon. My concern is vandalism, you know? They're right out there in front of God and everybody, you know, they're obvious. And they said that they tend to install them at twelve-foot heights, that they can't, they can't put the camera in a tree because of the solar panel that powers it, that, that sort of thing. I, I, I just wonder if it's gonna be a target for joy driving, you know? Which, which is irrelevant to us.
Right.
In, on this topic, but I was in, I was surprised that that was the response.
But there are some out there already, so.
Yeah, right.
Yep. Uh, who else? Kat, did you have any?
I have no comments.
Chris, can we come back to you?
Yes. Please call mom. Okay.
Uh, what do you want me to, like, what?
Um. All right, I hear some comments. Um, setback lines in the village are for a reason. It's so that people build their things, whatever it is they're building, away from the neighbors and away from others and out of sight. So I think allowing that to, um, things, uh, poles, cameras, and flagpoles, whatever.
I got it.
Outside the setback lines is inappropriate.
I, I got it.
So therefore, if a private HOA wants to put them, or if an HOA wants to put them on their private roads and they all agree to it, all good. But on a public road, I really have an issue with that. Um, I'm very concerned that, the, I'm, I'm concerned about the privacy of it. I don't think I want to have an HOA shooting down a publicly paved, paved road, not knowing what we're doing with that data. Um, I've had bad experiences with HOAs in my personal experiences where you just have to question, hmm, you know, maybe the current board has good intentions, but future boards maybe are not as level-headed or practical. And there's been a lot of challenges in some of my personal dealings with, you know, the people issues that come, come on, come in play when somebody's looking at that kind of data. Um, a lot of the burglaries we've had in Long Grove, as you know, have been frankly skewed more towards foot traffic than they've been towards car traffic. And I think the sheriffs reported that to us several times, where burglars are walking into the areas along tree lines and walking in back doors or climbing the buildings. So I don't really see this as being that advantageous to solve the problem. Um, another community had thirty cars that were taken, stolen.
What's the right word? Thirty cars were broken into, six were stolen.
On the weekend, on, on one weekend. So those cars are going for joy rides and the drivers are doing bad things long before they were stolen. So again, I, I just don't, I just don't see the, the value of allowing, um, things to be built by HOAs in her neighborhood.
Thank you for that feedback. Um, trustee Chris Meyer, or how about, uh, trustee O'Reilly, you're, uh, you're online here? Nope, no comment. Okay. Trustee Chris Meyer? Okay. Uh, trustee Micho?
I feel very similarly, Chris. He brought up a lot of my concerns of privacy, and I just don't think it's such a good precedent to put it in public, on a public road. It's one thing to do it on a private road, um, but it's a shaker road. That's not private, so.
Okay. Um, so I will just ask the question, does anyone want to make a motion to approve it?
Make a motion to approve it.
Okay. Motion made by trustee Tanucci, seconded by anyone?
I'll second one.
Okay, all right. Seconded by trustee O'Connor. That's a roll call.
Trustee Tanucci.
Aye.
Trustee O'Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Barowski.
No.
Trustee Chris Meyer.
No.
Trustee Micho.
No.
Trustee O'Reilly.
No.
All right, uh, so the motion was not carried.
I'll communicate with the HOA tomorrow.
Okay. All right, uh, moving right along, um, let's see, the next one is the discussion and consideration approval of a resolution supporting, in support of the Route Fifty-Third Quarter land, uh, to IDNR, the, the, basically transferring the land to the IDNR. So as you know, we had a board meeting that, uh, the last meeting in December, um, I said that, uh, there was a task force meeting on the sixteenth. I said, hey, uh, just want to get your feedback on, uh, straw poll on, you know, if you're okay with the vote yes to, uh, for the resolution. You all said yes, uh, so, um, I went ahead and voted. Uh, now what we have here is, uh, to formally, um, before the board, just reinforcing the fact that you're in support of that, that resolution. Now, we put a copy of it out, so you could actually see what it is on your, on your, uh, on your desk here before you, uh, but that's, that's really what we're asked, we're asking to do, is to formally, um, acknowledge, endorse, um, the, uh, you know, the, the vote that I took and the, the, basically the task force recommendation to transfer the land, uh, in the right, Route Fifty-Third Away to the, that's owned by IDOT, to the IDNR.
So moved.
Okay, moved by trustee O'Connor. Seconded by trustee Chris Meyer. Yes.
Trustee Barb Schuh.
Aye.
Trustee Chris Meyer.
Aye.
Trustee Barowski.
Aye.
Trustee Micho.
Aye.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Aye.
Trustee Tanucci.
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. Uh, now, um, Barbara Clip is here. This is discussion and consideration approval of a funding request by Midwest Sustainability Group, $1,000. So Barbara would like to make a presentation.
Mr. Jason, okay.
Is that what I heard? No, I thought you wanted to say a few words to us.
Your material was very good.
Yeah.
Thank you, yeah. So, um, it's always tough coming here. Um, I've, I've had a lot of calls with, uh, with our team, but, um, the president, there's so much we do that's confidential, strategic information, and this is a public forum. But I can tell you that, um, we are not gonna have a Springfield vote on this issue. At least, that's the Springfield team's strategy right now. Um, they believe this is an issue of having the governor put money in the budget. Um, they're anticipating, the governor comes out with his budget in a few weeks or next week. Um, and they don't expect, they'll be aligning it, uh, for IDNR to take over this, this property. Um, this is not the final money they need for State Park. This is just to maintain it and the liability and to, uh, staff a working group to decide what happens next. So, um, they, we will be advocating, along with the Illinois Environmental Council and our partners in Springfield, to make sure we get a line item in the budget, in negotiations, so that the IDNR can accept this property and begin deciding what it looks like. Um, we are asking, so you, you all voted, Hawthorne Woods voted, um, in favor of resolution. My job in the next couple of months is gonna be getting the county and the county forest preserve district to also vote in favor of this resolution to show Springfield and the governor that we have a lot of support for this. Just a bit of the work, and then excuse me.
What's, what's the reason for not getting a line item now?
They just don't think it's on its radar that it's gonna come out in the initial budget, and budgets are always a negotiation, so. Um, the Illinois Environmental Council in Springfield, all the environmental organizations that work statewide and recently are a member of the Illinois Environmental Council, they're a lobbying agency, and a lot of the organizations have their own lobbyists as well. Illinois Environmental Council, we had a meeting with them, and our Springfield lobby staff on our own teams, and, uh, they will be advocating, we were in a meeting with the governor, um, that this get added as well. There's been a lot of changeover. I don't know much to know or how Springfield, but, um, the deputy, Christian Mitchell was the deputy governor in charge of, um, infrastructure, so he oversaw IDOT and the tollway. Um, he was the one who raised the, the tollway stop the project. We met with him and we mentioned the project was stopped, and he said, you're welcome. Um, he left now. He's just resigned recently, having, having nothing to do with any of this. It's just the changeover of the new term of the governor, is what we're told. Um, so nobody's concerned about it, but we don't know who his replacement will be. So that's up in the air, and there's a new, um, head of IDNR, I think maybe it was absolutely, I don't know exactly how that happened, but there's a new head of IDNR, too. So there's a lot of changeover work following. Yes, and I've discussed this with, um, you two. Um, we're gonna be meeting with county board members. You have a lot of new elected officials here, partly because of the new redistricting and partly just because of the new elected officials. So I've asked the village, um, elected officials and staff to go with us when we meet with those, uh, county board members and the general assembly members, um, that now represent Long Grove, um, to help advocate that they support this.
You've got our support.
Barbara, if I could ask you a question, I think you're a great investment, but I'm curious, is anyone else funding you?
Yeah, Village Hawthorne Woods, uh, gave us $5,000 last, um, fall. And then, um, we are now partnering with Open Land. Um, a lot of the big, um, funding agencies, we're too small of an organization for them. So we're partnering with Open Land going forward, and they're gonna be the beneficiary, and we're gonna apply for grants together. So that's exciting.
So is Hawthorne Woods going to give you more money now?
Uh, we are in conversations with them. Yeah, they have a, I guess, a calendar year budget, so, um, we'll work together on that.
Well, if, if we have to, we have to. It's, it's a good investment.
Yeah, and I've been trying to get them to fund, uh, Mike Trupa's work, our communications director. Um, they have funded him in the past.
Yep.
Um, he is fabulous, and we feel like a big part of our strategy, getting the, get the governor to support this going forward, and, uh, the general assembly members is gonna be the public, persuading the public. So we think having him and his media expertise is gonna be really key in this next year as well.
Yeah, Bobby, we learned that they, they did do some funding, um, and also funded, uh, uh, Mike Trupa, too. So we, we met with them not too long ago, um, Mayor DiMaggio, uh, and learned that, so, that, which was good news. We did not, I did not know that.
Can you be a little bit more proactive though, along with this next budgeting cycle? I just sort of feel like kind of getting nickel, and I don't want to say nickel and dime, because it's not that, it's ten thousand at a time, I guess, but, um, if we go into the next planning budget cycle, can we at least put a line item in there that is a little bit more comprehensive than Barbara coming back every couple, three months saying, hey, need more money, kind of, you know?
Don't we have a line item?
We do, we do.
Yeah.
It is a line item, yeah, and it's, we initially put fifty thousand.
Well, let me restate that. Um, we have better percentage of funding than staff.
Fair, fair deal, yeah.
Because I'm not sure if this is the right thing, or if we go out and buy some television space on, on the news networks or whatever. You know, I, I don't know what the right approach is to market this.
And, and that's, that's a very good question. We, I, I think I can speak for everybody on, in the group, that we really thought that this, this was going to be it, you know? It's kind, not a slam dunk, but we thought after thirty years of this, right, we, the petitions and the whole- Sixty. That, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
You know, the, 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 you know, committee was appointed, the committee gave a response, and we figured, you know, it, it, it seems to be, uh, you can count on whatever politicians need to push through happening right after an election, because then by the time the next one comes around, they think the people have forgotten.
Well, maybe also the-
Well, we, we had hoped that would be us in February, you know, and, and we don't have a hundred percent support, and, uh, now, now we, now we have to go to Springfield. So, it's, it's kind of, you know, a little bit here, a little bit there, pretty soon you're talking real money.
Well, I get it, I understand it, I, you know, I watch it all along, yeah.
Yeah.
Just thinking about going forward and how we-
Right.
I have a question. Am I hearing correctly? It's not that there's opposition in Springfield, it's more of indifference, not even on their minds during the-
That's what I was going to say. I'd say that's maybe from the governor. He's obviously not opposed to this, or none of this would have happened.
Okay, good.
Um, IDOT, uh, IDNR doesn't want to run a mandate, which I understand. Um, I question how much money they need. I, if you look at the corridor, a good chunk of it in the northern end is leased out for agriculture, and what do they really do to maintain it right now? Like, there's a little mowing.
What have they done over thirty years, right?
And I'm wondering, so I'm going to FOIA and find out how much money they're getting in income from the leasing, and what their expenses are, because I really can't imagine that we're talking about that much money. But, they, they will need some money to staff, um-
Staff a working group going forward.
Similar to the task force, but it won't be a general assembly, it'll just be, I, I've advocated that we get some citizens on there, um, too, that have been very involved. Senator Bush wants to stay engaged, he's a private citizen now, so, um, like that.
Do we know how much IDNR would ask for?
Oh.
Or are they letting, are they letting others?
I had that in our meeting in Springfield, I said, what, what, how much, what, what we're talking about? They said, that's, that's a good question. So, IDNR has to give us that number.
Those are very nice pearls, and with that, I move to a-
[laughing]
All right, moved by trustee Browski, seconded by trustee Michio. Roll call, please.
Trustee Browski.
Aye.
Trustee Michio.
Aye.
Trustee Kritzmeyer.
Aye.
Trustee O'Connor.
Aye.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Aye.
Trustee Tanucci.
Aye.
Motion carried, thank you. Thanks for all your work, appreciate it.
Feel better.
Okay, um, okay, this is a presentation we're going to make, right? This is discussion of a resolution for implementation of funding of an invasive, invasive species mitigation grant, right? So, would you like me to share my screen? Is that what you want me to do?
Yes.
Okay. Let me, uh, watch my, oops, share button. How about this? I got this in the way, don't I? Can you see that? Is that good? Of course, I can't control it. How about this? Where's my buttons to move it? Can I just go like this? Okay, go ahead. Who's doing the presentation?
Natalie. I guess I'm, I'm just opening up, um, Natalie, um, husband. Well, first of all, I'm putting this forward, um, Long Grove is founded on a purpose of principle of preserving open space. It's been a big tenant of Long Grove, um, and all developments in many of these properties have conserves easements, um, and over the years, many of these easements and people's properties have become eyesores because they've been built as aggressive, non-mated plants, such as garlic musters, teasel, buckthorn, and fragmites, um, just to name a few. Um, because of this, the village in general has become less attractive. Um, I think we all see it as we ride down the road. Um, and I, to help educate and support our residents in maintaining these conservancy easements, which we're saving myself, I thought, um, uh, I proposed, uh, matching grant fund to help subsidize the removal of invasive species. Um, and I've worked with Natalie, and she's done a phenomenal job. She's kind of taken this idea and run, and she's done a lot of research on it, and so at this point, I'm going to turn it over to her.
Thank you. So, yes, so this is the proposed invasive species grant remediation program. Um, I'm trying to make this brief, I know everyone has things to do tonight, um, but here's a quick rundown. We're going to talk about the different ways to control it, monitoring, and then our program. So, first of all, invasive species remediation, it's a process of restoring the natural environment to the original state by removing or controlling invasive species, the invasive species plants and/or animals that are native to the area and disrupting the balance. Um, a lot of it around here is teasel. It spreads like wildfire. Um-
Will this be shared with everybody?
Yes.
The public, um, so there are diff, there are three different ways to mainly control
it. Um, yep, the first one is physical removal, a lot of hand pulling. Um, that's a very popular method with buckthorn, and then, um, going on, you can go to the next one. Um, chemical controlling it, um, I don't know if anyone's removed buckthorn, but a popular way is to chop it, treat it with some herbicides, and go on. I know we don't want to be filling our conservancy with chemicals. The third method is different biological controls and working to make the plants fight each other to, uh, survive and be the, be this plant out there, hopefully all of our natives. And then, to monitor and evaluate, um, these are going to be some essential components of this program to make sure that the conservancies are, be staying conservancies and staying native species. So, then this brings us to what our program's going to look like. And we're going to focus on, uh, prevention, control eradication of invasive species, uh, hit some objectives, which are going to be targeting and treating, assisting in preventing flooding. Um, flooding is always an issue in Illinois. A lot of us are soup bowls. Native plants do a lot better absorbing the groundwater. Um, using different ways to approach weed management and kind of get rid of some of the, uh, species that we don't want. Um, a big one is reseeding and planting native vegetation. A lot of people don't understand that you can, in fact, work in your conservancy if you're planting natives with the approval of the CSCC, that there is maintenance that can be done to preserve it. And then going to funding. Some notes, funding, this is going to be a reimbursed project, um, and it's going to be awarded through a competitive process. All these funds will be awarded post-project completion. The funding request at the moment was fifty thousand. I'll let Jenny, uh, speak to the board on that. Uh, the awards, it's going to be a minimum of five hundred and a maximum of two thousand. Um, so it's going to be a fifty percent match eligible. And then, the applications are going to be reviewed by the grant committee, that's going to be comprised of the village manager or designee, a conservancy and scenic corridor committee chair, or their designee, two sitting committee members of the scenic corridor committee, and a village board trustee appointed by the village president. And we do have a draft webpage for this program, um, that I will distribute to the trustees.
Anything you want to add to that?
No, I, um, I think she's summed it up really well. Um, the webpage is, um, was a little bit different than what you had in the board packet, and we've addressed a lot of the concerns that, um, Ken and Ann brought to us. Um, it, it is a, it is a thorough application, and I think having the conservancy, uh, scenic corridor group involved with this to evaluate the grant, um, and, um, opportunity for us to help our community make a beautiful place, and-
We're aiming high with fifty thousand, [laughing], um, but, uh, I consider it-
So, so, yeah, so what we're going to do is create a line item in the budget for up to fifty thousand dollars for somebody to apply to get up to two thousand of that, right? And it would be primarily, what, HOAs, and could it be private residences as well?
Yeah, private residents, HOAs, I think we even said businesses, if they have, um-
They're doing work in Long Grove.
Yeah, it has to be in Long Grove, that's your biggest limitation.
No, I read that. I, shouldn't it be the property owner, not the business name?
Yeah, that's probably.
I would, I would offer that, uh, when we talk about the resolution, if the board decides to move forward with us and have the resolution, um, starting this project, it'll be, uh, with fiscal year, um, and I think Vic would probably agree, I would not, uh, put a dollar figure on it, uh, simply because I think there's an opportunity for us to also, beyond what the board budgets, to secure some additional money through grants through, uh, various agencies where that opportunity might exist, though it may increase the amount that's in that line. Um, so-
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, so, so to, uh, fifty thousand was where we, where trustee Michio had wanted to go on this, and I think it's, I think it's a ambitious number, and I think it's a good number, but, um, we shouldn't pigeonhole ourselves if we can have an opportunity to get more money, so the resolution, I don't think would reflect the dollar amount in the line item.
So, would it be, can we resolve what we would say we would like to preliminary, or just put it in the budget for the next fiscal year?
Yeah, I, what I thought was if the, if the resolution was approved, that we would just, as part of the budget process, put a dollar amount in the budget and allow the board to, to discuss, should that number be higher or lower, just as any other line in the budget process.
Do you anticipate this starting anytime before May first? Um, well, I, I mean, I'd like it to start ten years ago, but, [laughing], but, um, you know, I, I think, I'm just excited that we're considering it, so, you know, it, it waits until May, I think. I mean, buckthorn removal is great in winter, so this, you know, this is the perfect time to remove buckthorn, so the sooner we can get a, a grant in, but there's work to be done year round.
Yeah, so why couldn't we have the grant process go forward immediately, assuming it passes, but then say that the actual money won't be available until May first?
And they're-
On a reimbursement basis, anyway.
It is on a reimbursement-
There will be implementation. Time for implementation, time for the creation of documents, time for notifying the public, time for the CSC and, and the appointees to that commission to evaluate it. And we're already into February, so, you know, the timing on it, that's-
Yeah, we need to get all that stuff going, otherwise we'll be in the next year.
If it passes tonight, then we can start all the-
Well, it's, it's not an enabling, it's not, uh, a resolution tonight, it's discussion if the board wants a resolution.
Gotcha. But homeowners, conservancy owners, buckthorn owners, which I don't think they're, I think that's almost everybody, teasel in particular, the sooner the word gets out that we're, we've done this, or if, if we pass it, that we've done it, the sooner people can make phone calls to try to line up people, because if you wait till May to get a landscaping revamped, you got to wait till next, basically, it starts again, it starts now. So-
And the teasel rosettes are already coming out in March.
That's right, yeah.
And, and-
And they're bolting in May and June.
The park districts hear tonight with the request for the teasel, so-
Right.
But we don't want to wait till May first to start the ball rolling.
But I, and I, I think a lot of it is information. Uh, there's a, a lady in Country Club Estates that pointed out to the conservancy across the street from her, and, you know, people don't know what to do with it, so they just let it go. It, it, and, and it's outrageous, ugly, but once it's pointed out to them, and they know that they can't speak with maybe someone from the, uh, the, the, uh, city corridor committee that could walk them through it, you know, Jim Hoag used to do that, then they know what to do. They know what to have, you know, a landscaper to do, or a helper, or whatever. Um, so, you know, it, it seeds blue and wind, right? Our worst enemy is all that stuff when you come off the coast of the street.
Yeah.
There's nothing but teasel there, you know? I don't, IDOT doesn't do anything about it, it's up, cut it down at the wrong time.
Yeah, which is exactly what they do.
Yeah, it's, it's-
They cut it in August and just blow seeds all over the place.
It's, it's kind of like spitting in the ocean, you know? It's like, what difference does it make, except internally, I, I'm with, I'm, I'm, I'm for it.
So, so, trustee, uh, O'Reilly, um, just want to pull you into the question, any comments or thoughts? Is that a no?
I, I do not.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Um, any other, and I guess, so what we're looking for is direction then, right?
I have some questions too. Um, so how does this impact the ten K for the park board in the park district? Do we separate the two? Do we include it in the fifty K? Do we make it part of that overall program, essentially doing the same thing? Question, food for thought, not looking for the answer, but I, I ultimately need to decide that.
I would, I would say that it should be a separate program, because two thousand won't do anything for teasel control.
And isn't that right, boy? Isn't that, that's not private property, a lot of that is scenic corridor, which is-
Oh, yeah, good point. It's a little qualify anyway.
Invasive species should be sixty thousand, not fifty or whatever.
I like, I am, [laughing].
Well, I'm just trying to be practical, right, because I see the ceiling up on the, on the, on the chart right there.
So-
So, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I'm interrupting you, go ahead.
No, I just had a couple more thoughts on the whole thing. Um, are we restricting it to- To what? To scenic corridor? Or what are we restricting it to? Because I don't want, you know?
Sounds like private property, right?
No.
It's just private property?
Yeah.
Are we prioritizing senior, uh, scenic corridor?
That is part of, um, we've talked, discussed that, um, as part of the grant evaluations, like as you're, submit your application, we look, the thought is, we'll look at what is the impact that this is going to have on the community, and, um, you know, I'm hoping that people come forward and we can map this out, um, but if we can, and we have so many applicants, then, yeah, we'll probably preference things that will have a bigger impact on, you know, more visi- visibility. That being said, um, we want to encourage, I mean, everybody's clearing up their face impacts everybody all around them, so there isn't a bad use of this money anywhere in the community. It's just, first of all, I mean, we've done, myself done a lot of conservation work in the community, and just people driving by. Why do your wood, woods look so different, or wow, look at all the stuff coming up. It's inspired multiple people in our communities to, to take on the projects. So, I just think that maybe you're impacting, you're not just driving down the road, but you're impacting your neighbor to take this on again. So, I, I hope this becomes like an annual budget, and it would just kind of spread like wildfire, probably intended.
[inaudible]
Yeah, no, 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 I watch, controlled burns, controlled burns.
Okay, smart question. So, the grant program is, I picked the phone up, I call my landscaper to come pull stuff out, right? How about for the homeowner who's got a, yeah, a truck in the north, just for us, to, to pull this stuff out? What do I do with it? I mean, I mean, is like hauling this stuff off part of the grant program? I'll give it, got a big dumpster and threw it all in there? I mean, I mean, are we just really saying, eh, go out and hire a landscaper and whatever they charge you will- What's the intention here? Alternative, I'm thinking about. And then, longer term, you know, we, you know, we, we need an education program, so we need some money put into that, I think, um, you know, not just sit next door, tweet or whatever, right? We need more than that, to do that, educate people on what this stuff is and all that, right? You know, my HOA, I'm sitting, I'm trying to tell them what fragmites is. It's like, like waiting and stuff, it looks really pretty. Um, so we need that. And then, longer term, do we draw the line somewhere and say, okay, five years from now, we want all this crap out of here? Get it out, right? Like, I think some communities have already legislated that buckthorn needs to be out by whatever date. I mean, do we do that as part of this whole thing?
Um, well, I, I can speak to that education, um, and I'm a little bummed and don't have, um, Natalie's new website up here. She has put together a really great resource online that has a lot of information on the invasive species and connections to other- and connections to other resources that, like the Morton Arboretum and the Illinois Department of, um, you know, the U of I has a great website. So, we have, the website itself has a lot of really wonderful information, so...
And pictures.
And, and pictures. Um, so, and I think that by using our, you know, reaching out to our HOAs, which we have done in the past with those meetings and directing them to this resource, also in our newsletter, um, we always focus on teasel or buckthorn. We're trying to educate them, so I think that is definitely a piece of this. Um, I, I, I think, I mean, I would love for it to be, uh, you know, to become, you know, this is something that is required for you to, to take care of your buckthorn, because it does impact the entire community, I, that is far down the line, I think, I think this is baby stuff, but, um, I think this is a, a first, a great first step.
Yeah, we have to start somewhere.
Yeah.
This is a good start.
The other thing I think about is the scheduling of the grant applications. To me, it's, see, I don't, I'm not sure what the plan is, like if we're gonna publish a date that says we're gonna start accepting them on this date, and our first evaluation, everything that's submitted is forty-five days later or something.
Yeah.
You know, I just don't want somebody to miss the cutoff because they're one day late in submitting it to the committee.
I think we were talking about doing rolling applications, like...
See, I'd like to avoid that if I could, I'd rather just, yeah, I would, 'cause I'd like to put something out and say, hey, you got forty-five days, meet your landscapers, go figure out your dumpster plan, go hook your truck up, whatever, and then come into the village and say, on this date, I wanna evaluate all of them, because as soon as you pass this, I'm gonna turn mine in tomorrow.
(laughing)
But then I got a conflict, right? So, right?
(laughing) Oh, my. No, but I...
So I'd like to have that, like, that line in the sand that says, okay, all the applications come in, they go in confidence, in confidence, sort of...
Right.
To the committee, and they evaluate them for what they are based on.
What if, what about, I mean, I could see more than one evaluation, but, you know, what quarter or three times?
I'm, I, I think it's great that you think we're gonna have that many applications. I just, I'm not optimistic, I don't know that many people doing this work, so that's why, my thought was if we have rolling, then people, as they get excited about it, they can commit it, and we can eventually, you know, tap out on our, but, I mean, if you are correct, and we have so many people coming forward that we're gonna run out of this money that quickly, I think you're absolutely right, we have to have a window where you can submit these. Um, so, I mean, I think that's something we'll, we'll kind of discover as, you know, what, what is the truth?
So, can I, so, so first off, the question is, does, is everyone in favor of a program like this, right?
I am, yeah.
So, I mean, I'm hearing everyone, everyone's, like, Bobby, are you, no, you're shaking, no, okay, so, a good portion are. Um, then second, it's the, how do you implement such a program, right?
Why, why is Bobby opposed to it?
Um, I, I'm, I, well, first of all, when, when, when y'all start talking about coming onto my yard and telling me what I can do and what I can't do, we're gonna have a, a little different discussion. Um, and, but I'm, I'm, I'm sitting here next to Janet, and I recall, what, three years ago, maybe four years ago, when we scraped to get ten grand for teasel, and now we're a big spender and we're going fifty grand, and that might not be enough. I, and, and so, the, I, in, in theory, I like a program, I would never have gotten involved in teasel years ago, because I, I know that we need to address it, but I would like to see us take baby steps before we jump in the pool.
Your baby step would be what?
Ten thousand.
I'm sorry, say again, please?
Ten thousand.
Um, so, well, so how's that gonna go? Um, just maybe two or maybe five people would get access to it under this program, is that what you're thinking?
Yes. As, as a pilot program, see how it works, what are the glitches that you're going to encounter before you do it big time? And what are you giving up when you're spending fifty? In theory, what are you giving up? You, it, it's far as spending is concerned.
Fifty thousand? That, 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 and that's why it would be part of the comprehensive budget discussion, so you could answer that?
Oh, yeah, so, yeah, uh, it would have to be a budgeted item, and you're right, you'd have to say, if we did this, we can't do that, right?
Exactly.
Okay.
Is, is there any possibility of, if, if I understand, this, the idea was for the conservancy that look so overgrown and unkempt, right?
I think that, I don't wanna limit this conservancy easement, because I think that there, there are some people, I, I believe that there are some people that don't have conservancy easements on their property, so, and they have a buckthorn problem.
Right.
So I don't wanna limit that, um, I mean, we can have weeds in a conservancy or without. I just think that, what I think of Long Grove, we dictate that we have conservancy easements.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, guys, thank you.
And we're requiring people to have these things.
(laughing) It's our teasel.
Right, and they're so limited on what they can do with it, but let's help them manage it effectively.
So is, 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 is it not, well, not advised, or is it advised, could it be advised, that when tall grass comes in with the chemicals, which through the, through the park district, they're, they're, say, for example, there's my neighbor, is it, would it be possible to have their professional expertise? I don't know that I would be competent to spray chemicals on buckthorn. Wha, you know, in other words, could, could we piggyback off of the park district work and wherever that area is, and homeowners in that area saying, you know, hey, yeah, on that day, you know, I can spray paint everything that I want you to do red, you know, I'll, I'll, I'll kick in for it. It, 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 do, are you get, is that possible, or is that so complicating that it's not worth it?
I think that sounds complicated, but I also think as a village, we can't dictate that you can own this company, right?
Oh.
So, now...
No, but it'd be, but it'd, it'd be available.
Um, I think that would be something that perhaps the individual homeowner could reach out to.
Okay. And, and tall grass may not be open to it, you know, they may wanna send a crew, do this, do that, boom, we're outta here, kind of thing.
So, so I, I sense, though, there is some common desire to try to test something here, right?
Yeah.
So, um, and, so the question is, then, you know, what do you put back before the board for approval? 'Cause it'd have to be in the resolution, um, and, I mean, it could be one where, you know, you set the structure of the program, and the funding will happen once the budget's approved, right? And that addresses, you know, Bobby's concern, um, and maybe addresses a lot of people's concerns. So I don't know if we can, um, if we're at a point here, uh, you know, that maybe somebody could put pen to paper, now you've got an application, you've got some thoughts, can somebody come back with kind of a draft resolution of what it might look like, right? Am I, I mean, am I sensing that we'll have enough agreement on that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The, the green light on the, the green light allows us to, they can ask them to write a resolution for it, fine tune the grant, uh, program, as well as to, uh, start looking at dollars, uh, for the budget. But most importantly, based on what I'm hearing from the board, it'll give us this window right now to begin outreach, because we know it's, it's, it's moving forward. The dollar, dollar amount seems to be the question, and, uh, one of the bigger questions, but at least we can begin the outreach and communication out there to let them know this, this programs.
And, it, it, Chris's point on education, I think the website is, is great, I looked at it, but I, I believe in that. But even things like flyers, you know?
Natalie and I, Natalie and I and trustee Michelle, yeah?
Long, long-term goal to get the conservancy...
And we'll hit the HOAs again, um, in a little bit here when we get the HO president's meeting scheduled, so. Uh, Jeanette Berger had a nice presentation at the last one, so...
And, and to Bobby's point, what, what would, I think a test program, pilot program is, is, is a great idea. You know, you could limit it to, the first year, you could limit it to twenty-five homeowners, you know, or maximum of twenty, and to keep the parameters the same, I, I don't know what those numbers come out to, I'm just...
Yeah, there you go, all right.
Okay, so, but, 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 you know, that's not a bad idea. It would work out the game.
(laughing) It's mad. I, that's over engineered, but do you really wanna get five people together to do a committee review for only five applications?
No, I, I think five is not enough, it doesn't give you enough, doesn't give you enough material to work with.
It works bug load, yeah, I get it, but it works bug load.
Yeah.
I don't know, who knows what's right for this?
All right, so do we have enough?
Yeah.
To, you can move forward and try to get it to the next level? All right, excellent.
Yeah, and thank you for all the energy and time that you've put into this. I think it's, it's something we really need.
Okay, so then, um, I'm gonna keep this moving then, right? So then, discussion and consideration, resolution for the implementation of a community grant program. So, um, I don't know if, Greg, if you wanna introduce this a little bit better than I will, right? But, uh, you know, we have a, we have a, a resolution that we approved for community grants, but it didn't, didn't include events, right? And so we wanna amend that policy so that it includes events.
I, I, it was a combination of events, programs, how, how are we gonna do this, as well as, um, some of the requirements for the grant, 'cause the, the money cannot be used for capital expenditures, it could not be used to support payroll, so the board had asked in the fourth quarter of last year for us to do a moratorium or a suspension of the grant program until a new grant program is created. Uh, that's what's before the board now. Um, I had sent it out a couple weeks past, uh, some board members had gotten the communication back to me on various, uh, elements of those, uh, of, of what they wanted addressed or see addressed, and that's the product for the finished, uh, uh, grant that you have in, in your package. Uh, this covers, in fact, it goes in a little more depth. If you compare it to the previous program adopted by resolution in twenty eighteen, this program certainly has more depth, more information. It is going to be a reimbursement, uh, show us the receipts, show us what was done, a little more history about the requesting organization, um, their work in the community, their work on other projects, uh, focus on nonprofits to, uh, give, give, uh, preference to nonprofits versus for-profit organizations, and things that just generally build, uh, bring the community together, either from the standpoint of economic development or from a program standpoint, uh, creating a program that benefits the health, the safety, and welfare of the community where we may not have a program. Um, so if the board's, uh, the resolution is provided as well, it's been reviewed by the village attorney. If the board's inclined to adapt the community building grant, or, I'm sorry, the community grant this evening, uh, we also have two applications, uh, for, for requesting a fund.
It just seems that, I appreciate the, the expansion to events, and trying to tie it up, but it also seems like, doesn't have, do we have a clear understanding of the why? I, I think we need one, but I, you know, we gotta clearly, do, do we all have common agreement of what the purpose is?
For events, or for the whole...
For the grant.
Program.
The grant, right.
The twenty, the twenty...
I, 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 I don't, I'm saying devil's advocate on both sides here, to me, there's a, we're kinda saying, we're... It's like, you know, it's, if you're asking, call it a small spot for other things, if you wanna do it that way. I think originally we were trying to say, we, we have, we have people coming in and saying we wanna have this interesting little music program, and what if we wanted to invite, you know, the Stevenson High School band to come and do something, or, you know, I don't wanna limit it to music. I'm just wondering, is this doing it?
That can't work at a go.
Is there, is there a community, is there a community group that's not a nonprofit that still wouldn't be on it? That would stay our purpose? I'm not clear on that. I just think we should be able to say real quickly, this is what we want this used for. I think originally it was for building community, like bringing community together, I don't know if this is it or not.
Well, I, I...
I, I think we took, uh, our simple little town and our simple little desire to make something unique, and, and I think you, you hit on exactly why it was good then, and, and you're using the music people as an example, and, and they just needed a few funds to push them over the edge in order to perform. And now, we're, we're so money oriented, um, and, and then I, I wonder, why do we have to be, um, a wider community need? Um, if you had a, a, a foursome of wind instruments and they needed twenty-five hundred dollars in order to perform in the village, you may not like wind instruments, I love them. So are, are they with, are, are they going to be supportive of the whole town? No, that wasn't the point of, of establishing this. This was for those unique organizations that a small town has. We're not a million population, we don't have five hundred employees, we're a little town, and, and we should be able to respond without having ten pages of rules in, in order to do so. And, and we've lost, we've lost the element that we started with, which maybe that's what you wanna do. It's not what I wanna do, and it doesn't sound like what Ann wants to do. It's almost as if, from what you just said, Ann, I don't know that we can or should define exactly what it is we want. 'Cause I hope that there's someone independent who can come forward and say, but for X amount of dollars, I could do this, we could do this.
To pick up, I, I didn't mean exactly what we want, like we want, you know, four art festivals and two musicians, or not that prescriptive, but more on kind of like a, what, we were looking for, you know, unique opportunities to showcase talent, or unique opportunities to bring parts of the village together or something, so it was kind of a higher level why.
Exactly.
So I think the purpose is pretty well explained in the first paragraph of both the event and the program descriptor. And I think it is good to outline what qualifies and what does not, otherwise we'll end up where we were before, where we're funding stuff that really didn't fit within the rules and probably didn't deserve funding in the first place, in my opinion. So this is a lot more, more, it's, it's better defined than what we had before. And the purpose is in the first paragraph, support, in the case of events, to support local tourism attractions and events, it will enhance the marketing of the village to visitors, positively impacting the economic vibrancy of our community. So, events and activities that have the potential to attract non-residents, increasing economic opportunities for long Grove businesses and organizations will be considered. Ultimately, we want, not just to give money to organizations because they do some good stuff, but things that will ultimately positively impact our community and the businesses in our community. I feel that's what this is doing.
Yeah, I, I'm glad you clarified that, because that's not what I wanted, that's not what we wanted when we started. There was no purpose in marketing the village, it was to bring the, the, the residents together.
Well, why can't we have a new purpose with the new program?
Well, 'cause I agree, I agree, I, I, now that you're read it like that, I, I agree with Bobby. This was supposed to be a vehicle, a tool for some of the resident, you know, volunteer commu, committees to come to us and say, hey, we need a little bit of funding for this. It was, we're targeting towards the residents, not tourism, we already got tourism, we got...
Right.
The whole committee, we got the SSA, we got all that money going over there. Um, but this was about the smaller organizations within the community who say, hey, we need to plant some flowers, we need to put a little bridge over there or something, you know, that, that's what it was for, I mean, you know...
Need to put a big...
A different bridge, okay.
Geez.
But to me, that was, that's what it was about, it was the historical society, it was Arts and Music Council, it was those kinds of organizations to come to us and say, we need a little funding because, A, we don't have any, and B, it'd be good for the residents. And all of this doesn't speak to the residents, Long Grove, it's all about the businesses and the organizations and economic development again, and... And it's not what it was about, in my opinion.
I, I agree with your statement. And I, I agree with your, the thinking that has been expressed here. That was our goal. We didn't have parameters, and it got to be messy and sticky.
Right.
So, so, you know, the task was, let's, let's, let's put this in writing. Not so that it keeps things out, but that it sets parameters within which we have, we have the, the, the right to say, this fits. This, this is why we started this. It does fit. It, it may also attract tourism. It may also attract, you know, people other than residents. But so did, so did the Sunday concerts that the Arts and Music Council put on, you know? And there's nothing wrong with that. They're our neighbors. I, I, I'm happy to have them here. So, I, I, I think that, I think there's enough form here to allow us, for, not to be rigid, but, but to be something we can point to and say, well, you know, this isn't exactly what we had in mind. However, it's kind of unique. It's kind of creative. Let's, let's give it a shot. You know, and, and, and the fact that it says, you know, that the person putting on whatever it is has some expenses, has some overhead. We're not funding the entire thing. We're helping. You know, I, I, I like that part of it, and I, I think it's helpful. Again, you know, as you mentioned earlier, not just for this board, we were, we were here when this started, but for those who come after, you know? That it, it helps them out. So, um-
And it was mentioned about the residents, the program description does specifically say, um, that programs would be to improve the well-being of the community and the quality of life for its residents. So, that is covered in the program description.
Pretty broad, pretty broad.
But see, it is, and-
But ability to, the event to grow over two or more years. What's that mean? Like, we need to have more people pile in for this event? Or, or happy with the bonfire that we set up at the firehouse?
Say that part again.
Well, ability of the event to grow over two or more years as one of the assessment criteria. I'm okay with a bonfire for the thousands, thousands of dollars to bring some sand in and some marshmallows and stuff. I'm good with that. I don't need to have it grow.
Every year?
Every year. I'm good with that.
Yeah.
Okay. I agree, the thing's got, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, so-
The, the thing, thing's got sticky, and so I think, you know, having some clarity, I, I'm in favor of that. I, I am. I just think when it's, it's only a nonprofit or this, it's now, all of a sudden, you've cut all of the little. When you say residents, I hear that, not as for residents, but by residents.
Yeah.
And this doesn't allow that.
But is, is that the, is that the purpose of the five oh one C three to, to say that, um, that if it's a commercial enterprise, we're, we're not, we're not really interested, or we're not, we're not creating this fund for commercial enterprises. We're creating it for, you know, the-
Community groups, the historic society.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
No, you're exactly right, Trustee O'Connor. That's, that's exactly what this, this is geared towards. So, part of what saw this moratorium come on was, uh, discussions on funding events where one for-profit business was using it as a tool to potentially, uh, increase, increase their business versus, uh, what the program was explained to me early on in twenty eighteen, to bring people together in the community.
Right.
Uh, and, and to have everybody reap the reward of everybody coming into the community. So, nonprofit is just a, uh, something to be looked at for preference. It's not restricted to nonprofits.
And that makes, and that makes, that makes sense to me.
I thought it said it was, so I'm, because I was reading too. There's, there's commercials, I have to tease, there's nonprofit, and then there could be like, just, you know, the garage band.
Yeah.
Right, yeah. And, you know, I don't care if it's the book or the book, whether they're gonna review books in a comedy sketch.
Project is considered ineligible. It does not contribute to the overall intent of bringing official visitors into Long Grove. Are you kidding me?
So, that's the event one you're reading, right?
Well, yeah, but the program one doesn't have that line.
I didn't know there was a different one. Maybe that's what you mean.
Yeah, there's two different ones.
So, then they would apply under the program section, not the, not the event section.
So, so, we're getting stuck here, uh, pretty quickly. Um, I know a lot of work went into this. I'm trying to think through how we, um, progress this, because I don't know that, uh, the way it is structured, we're getting support from everyone, right?
But I, I think, I, I, the impression I have, um, please, you know, tell me if, to be quiet or, no, that's not-
No, I would never tell you to be quiet.
It's, it's, it, it works.
Does?
Yeah.
Be quiet. So, go ahead.
Um, I, I, I think it, it's something that deserves more of a cursory read.
Yeah.
And, you know, maybe go over it a little more, and I, I don't think it's as restrictive as it appears from a-
Are, are you suggesting that those of us who are questioning it didn't read it? Didn't study it?
No.
Is that what you're suggesting?
No, Bobby, I'll, I'll speak to that. I, I think it does take some time to think through it a little bit. There's a lot here, I think.
No, 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 I, no, no, no. Something that, that Rita just said was that we, we need to, it was a suggestion that you and I and, and whoever aren't thoroughly versed on it. I'm quite versed on it, uh, chapter and verse. So, so don't suggest to me that I haven't studied this.
Bobby, I'll speak for myself. I, I would like to read it more, just so I could get it, get it in my head a little bit. I think there's a lot to it.
That, that's, I agree. I agree.
Let me play the tape.
I, I didn't hear it that way, Bobby. Oh, but I, I think, I think that there, I, I think we asked for this. I think having a structure is a good thing. Would it make sense not to take action on it, but maybe get some comments back or something like that and see if we could?
That's kind of where my head was at, was where do we, you know, cause we're stuck.
A little bit, yeah.
And, um, we're not probably gonna get this passed tonight without, um, some edits. So, maybe that's basically what we do.
Sausage for live and in person?
What'd you say? Sorry?
Too much sausage for live?
Prob, probably, yeah. We're not gonna be able to change this whole thing. So, I mean, a lot of thought went into this. I got it.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
And it'll affect the next two items as well.
Well, there's a question I have too. Uh, uh, first off, the one item, it's covered by the original program, right? Um, the, the one for the Teesels, right?
Yes.
Yes, we, we should have no problem with that. Um, the other one is, you know, we could go back to exception and authorizing it. So, we could do that too, so.
Did you repeat that, Bill? I didn't understand your last sentence.
Oh, what I'm saying, oh, my last sentence is basically saying, for the holiday lighting, we could go back saying, hey, we have not come to a conclusion on this. Could make an exception and go ahead and approve that grant.
Which I think we should do.
Correct. So, so that's why I'm saying, don't get caught, let's get this thing right. But if, if we wanted to approve the, the holiday lighting or whatever, we can do that. We, we as a board can decide that and not, and not hold it any longer. While we figure it out.
We put item nine to decide and, and consider ten and eleven.
Correct, yes. Okay? And then, so in the meantime, we're gonna have to somehow, I know you put it out there, you got some feedback, uh, but we're gonna have to dig into it a little bit. Is that okay?
Whatever the board wants.
Is everyone okay with that?
Say it again, just differently. What are we doing?
We're going to, um, we're gonna look at this new restructured grant program, and we're going to all look at it-
Yep.
Again, and come back with some suggestions and how we'd like to change. Then bring it back before the board.
Yes, definitely. Get, what's the part about jumping to ten, ten and-
Well, ten and eleven, we have the board's authority to approve both ten and eleven. We don't have to have this other thing in place to do that.
Our current grant program is suspended.
Correct.
So, under the current grant program, nine, ten, or eleven could actually-
Right.
Get considered unless you do it by exception.
That's right, yes. And-
Yes, we can do that.
You're suggesting that we-
We do that by exception, yes. And Vic's nodding, said, saying, we can do that.
I mean, the money's in the budget. You all decided that we wanted to have a revi- revisitation to the framework. But the framework is not essential to spend the money that's in the budget. And I think that if, if, notwithstanding the suspension, if you want to move forward on these, you can. Just needs to be a specific motion for it, and it has to be approved.
Okay. And, or, just for me, so I get this thing. We, we're, we're working under the old parameters or we're working under new parameters?
I'm working under- You, you don't have to have any parameters. Money's in the, the money's in the budget, and you can decide. And, and I mean, whether it's the proposed parameters or the old parameters, the ultimate decision is by this board.
Understood.
How you, how you apply those parameters and weigh them will always be in your legislative discretion. So, um, I, I think that's where you have ability, if you think it's a worthwhile thing to do, to, notwithstanding the, the prior suspension of the program, to move forward on these particular requests.
Okay, and-
Can I make a motion to approve the, the, uh, grant for the Christmas lighting?
I would, I was in the middle of a question.
Okay, so-
Couldn't hear me.
Um, we do have, so I guess we'll put that, it's, we're, we're not, I didn't introduce the topic yet, right?
Oh, I thought, I thought you did.
Yeah, we may want to have a formal tabling of number nine, just-
Okay, let's do that first.
Just to avoid any kind of confusion.
So, okay, so, uh, should we take a quick, uh, straw poll, vote to table number nine? And we'll let, uh, uh-
No, it's okay.
Trustee O'Connor make her-
Go ahead. I, you know, I got all that. I mean, I, I started to waste the time. That part I completely understood. It's, I'm asking, are we, are we then therefore going to make a decision about the funding request that we had put off until we-
Yes, we are. Yes.
That's what I'm asking.
Okay, yes, we are. Okay. So, let's just do a, uh, a straw poll really quick and go around the horn on, uh, tabling number nine. So, Trustee Browski?
Table.
Trustee Kritzmeyer?
Yep.
Uh, Trustee O'Reilly?
Table.
Okay, uh, Trustee Micho? Okay, Trustee O'Connor?
I like it as it is, but I'm outvoted.
You're outvoted, okay. So, it's table, okay. So, now, we have, uh, consideration, discussion, consideration, approval of a community grant application for the twenty twenty-two Robert Parker Coffin Bridge Holiday Lighting in the amount of twenty-seven, thirty, thirty-four. And do we need to add anything to that, Vic?
Uh, notwithstanding the prior suspension of the program, just so it's real clear that we are expressly accepting this one.
Okay, got it.
So moved.
Uh, moved by Trustee O'Reilly?
Second.
Second by Trustee Kritzmeyer. Roll call, please.
Discussion.
Discussion, okay. We get, okay.
I love the historical society. I love the bridge. If we're gonna light the bridge and spend money there, we should light other things and spend money other places outside of downtown. And that's why I don't support this request. I think we need to take a look at the whole village. We should do something up on eighty-three. We should do something up on twenty-two and Old McHenry. The other entrances of the village. I'd rather spend lights, or I'd rather spend that money illuminating the entrances to all the village than just the bridge. So, I, I, man, it's a great idea. I love it. Love the bridge lit up. Love it. I get it. Hot chocolate by the bridge, really good, but we gotta look at the whole village. We pumped so much money into downtown already. We've gotta look outside the village, uh, or the downtown area.
I agree with you, but I, I also think that in this case, it brought people in, it's already expanded. But I completely agree with you going forward. We should have-
It's already expended.
This is in arrears.
Oh, I did not realize.
It already happened, yeah.
This is from the, the last lighting, yeah.
Yeah, but I completely agree with you on having a plan that is comprehensive around it. It's not just here.
Yeah, we, just, not just here, yeah.
I agree with you on that. But this one is already been spent.
I didn't realize that.
Yeah.
The, the board had said, just, uh, as a reminder, the board said when we, that we were gonna retroactive look at this when the program was developed.
So, they're just looking for some funding now, then?
Correct, the review report they sent already.
You're sorry?
Yep.
This, this is a commitment on our promise that we would pay it.
Yep, Jane, Jane's back there.
Yeah, you know, something else was, you're not paying for the lighting, but it was an event. We had, we brought in, it was advertised, we had a lot, it was cool, 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 cool.
Understand.
And we had a lot of residents that came in. They got free hot ciders, and they got cookies, and they got donuts, and all that kind of stuff. It was all donated. So, it was, you're paying for the lights, but there was an event that involved the residents and brought residents together. And there was Santa there doing his thing. Santa started at five, you know, started a half hour early because the kids were already there begging to talk to him.
Understand.
But it's an event. There's an event around the, the lighting that occurred.
Understand that.
What does that mean, we paid for the lighting? What does that mean?
No, you, you were helping to pay for the lighting. Uh, there's other-
Aren't you seeing the lights? I, I'm not-
No, I think, I think I was putting them up.
To put them up, okay.
On the bridge?
Yeah.
On the bridge.
I thought Ryan and John Kopecchi did that.
No. They had that, that's only just-
That was done.
I'm glad John Kopecchi was not climbing the lights.
Yeah, for sure, for sure.
I know, people say, I, I, I do that.
Again, I, I think my point was made. Bad event could be held outside of downtown as well. It could be held in all areas.
Sure.
And bring the residents in and to the benefit of all their business owners in the areas that we move those events around to. So, I get it, understand it, it's all good.
Chris, if, if I could remind everyone, at the time that I brought the issue of doing, um, Archer Road, I also suggested that we needed to do this kind of thing in every, in every, um, um, marketing area that we have in, in the, in the town. And that, that this should be a universal kind of approach to, um, spending money. And so, you're, you're, you're right on target.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a, um, a live motion. It was moved by Trustee O'Reilly, seconded by Trustee Kritzmeyer. Um, that's a roll call vote if there's no more discussion.
O'Reilly?
Aye.
Trustee Kritzmeyer?
Aye.
Trustee Browski?
Aye, but I have a question. Why, once it's fiscal year twenty twenty-three, partial paperwork for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, it should be fiscal year twenty twenty-
Uh, our fiscal year is, it's straddled, so it's a twenty-two, twenty-three.
Well, no, this is a twenty-three, twenty-four.
We're right.
Oh, on the application?
On the applications, moving it into the next fiscal year?
Application, no, the application, they filled out the current application.
Uh, okay, I see. Thank you.
Yep.
Sorry, thank you.
You're in the middle.
Did you call my name already?
No, I have not. I'm kidding me. Trustee Micho.
I have a question.
Okay.
I'm gonna ask. Okay, so, I, I just want to understand this. When, when did we say okay to paying for the lights? When were, when did that happen?
Uh, it was in December and-
November.
That was, I remember Archer.
It was a prior meeting.
It was in November, the meeting, the November meeting before, before the event happened. The Tuesday before the light.
Okay, yeah. I just couldn't remember the date.
It was the Tuesday before the lighting. The lighting was on the, I think, nineteen, fifteen, maybe?
So, it was ordered, but it wasn't paid for?
No, they, you guys paid for it already, right? You're gonna get reimbursed.
We're reimbursing them.
We're reimbursing them.
Okay, all right. But, but, but it came after the fact. Is that correct?
Yeah.
It, it, I'm just trying to get this straight in my mind. Why?
Well, we, we would have approved it at that time, but we had a moratorium on the grants. So, we said, when we redo the grant program, then we'll, we'll vote on the money. It was sort of a debate among us that we were gonna approve it. Just, we just couldn't officially do it at that time.
I understand, and I'm gonna, I'll, I'll say aye. I'm also gonna say, for me, this is why I like the parameters.
Got it.
I'd like a deadline for the request. I don't like coming in a week before.
We were the problem. They were not the problem. We were the problem.
Wasn't finished yet. Wasn't finished. We're in the middle of, you know, I just, I, I like deadlines that we abide by. No, put your request in by June first, or June fifteenth. I don't care what the date is.
Thanks for looking at this.
Don't, I get, I don't like it when it's last minute stuff, and we make-
This came in October twenty-fifth, though. So, it came, it was on time, so.
Okay, okay, you know, but-
Vic just looked it up.
Okay, but, you know, we also had, I mean, you talk about money for Teesel. We also had money, we paid the township to close the bridge and all that. Okay, all right, cool, I got it. But then it's twenty-five hundred dollars for Archer, which we hadn't talked about in advance. So, that part just makes me uncomfortable. It's, it doesn't feel, it doesn't feel professional, I guess. Uh, 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 long story short, aye.
Thank you, thank you for your vote.
You're welcome.
No questions. Aye.
All right, motion carried. Do you want to go to the next one? All right, so this discussion, consideration, approval of a community grant for Teesel eradication, amount of ten thousand dollars. Vic?
Uh, notwithstanding the prior suspension of the grant.
Okay, move- Okay, moved by trustee Micho.
Second.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kritzmeyer, roll call please.
Trustee Micho.
Aye.
Trustee Kritzmeyer, aye. Trustee Browski? Trustee O'Connor?
Aye.
Trustee O'Reilly?
Aye.
Trustee Tanucci?
Aye.
All right, motion carried, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, there you are, I'm like, where are you? Screen there.
Thank you.
All right, moving right along, village.
Yeah, nice, nice material, thank you.
Oh, thank you, thanks, Anne, okay.
Thank you, moving right along, I do not have a report tonight, trustee Browski.
Nothing, thank you.
Uh trustee Kritzmeyer. Trustee Micho.
The only thing I have to say, Chris, is my grant is north Long Grove two.
(laughing)
Now we're apart.
All right, thank you.
Can I hire a landscaper to help me with my buckhorn and
Yeah, big old truck, pulling that truck off pretty good.
I am not, I'm not funny, I'm
Yeah, not getting in mind.
Okay, so trustee O'Connor, do you ever
Do you have a report?
You do, yes.
I'm so excited.
I am excited.
Okay.
Yes, wow.
So, so we we had the meeting regarding the warning system for the bridge that we've been discussing, and I I can I can reiterate all of this. I'll start with, I would start with, we talked earlier today about some traffic count numbers that we're still waiting to get, we're waiting for Buffalo Grove to share with us, which they have promised to do, traffic counts that that they took of of, not drive by traffic, it's cut through traffic on checker in the last year or so, which we would find helpful for for things of of the bumps, humps, um, Jersey Jersey barriers, whatever, or nothing, correct?
Thank you.
So so to put that, you know, to put that answer in there, we ultimately decided in our meeting that there is no silver bullet, there is no one answer to keep vehicles from hitting the bridge, as long as it's eight feet, six inches high, it's gonna get hit, period, it's still happening in Carolinas, it's happening in England, I think we sent a video on that, it's gonna keep happening. Um, we 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 don't even really know, I mean, even when the bridge was ten foot six, we had occasional hits, not as many as we have now, but there's there's no one thing we can do, so we've decided that we we do think Jeff had a had a very interesting thought that he noticed that nothing hit the bridge when there was Happy Holidays at the opening, and he he said he he thinks that it's because it's it's not there three hundred and sixty five days out of the year, so you know, the Happy Holidays made, he thinks, made perhaps made people more aware, didn't hit the bridge, I
Made them look up.
And maybe, maybe, perhaps, perhaps, you know, I
And the light?
And it could be the lights as well, yeah.
There's a bunch of stuff, there's a book called Messy, and things that do that, where that novelty
Yes.
Makes people think harder, and therefore they engage and pay attention, that's why traffic circles work better, they have speed, but they work better.
And it makes them see things that they pass every day, you know, how many times Yeah, how many times you drag down the road and and say, where'd that building come from? I was here last week and that building wasn't here, you know, it's just, it covered the structure and it's different, the eye, it catches the eye, and I I think he's onto something. Um, so so we're we're thinking that painting, painting the arrows on the asphalt as you approach the bridge from both sides where it appears to be, where the where the road appears to be narrowing, we think that temporarily, until people get used to it, that something like that would be more useful, we we didn't, we all agreed that more signs is not the answer, um, if it's just sign clutter and they don't see it, which is probably why they saw the Happy Holidays, whatever, if that's what it was, um, and that the expense and the red beam with the flashing is probably not warranted for those reasons. Any questions, any comments? End of report.
So there'll be an update?
When we get the traffic council, which they had promised by end of January, so obviously.
What does the traffic count have to do with the bridge itself?
No, no, that, no, that was just the preliminary thing, the point I wanted to get
I mean
Just inform you on that.
I mean, if Jeff's, I mean, what's wrong, why can't we paint squirrely arrows on the pavement right now, I mean, seems like a pretty cheap thing to do.
Well, that that was one of the, that's what we came up with, you know?
All right, so you're gonna
Consider, I guess, hearts for Valentine's or something.
So it's gonna come back with
Thanks, Rita.
Between you and Jeff, a recommendation?
Well, on the bridge?
Yeah.
This is what, this is what we arrived at.
Okay.
This is it.
So somebody's gonna come back with the Paul's own pricing?
Or what?
To put stripes?
Painting?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry, yes.
Okay.
So that's the recommendation, to put stripes on the ground?
Well, it's 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 an optical illusion, it's painted, the arrows are painted in such a way that it gives you the impression that the road is narrowing, which you slow down as you approach the the stop sign.
We should put something on the bridge.
And if it doesn't work, we're just gonna paint black, paint them black.
Might just be coincidence, but if it's when we put Happy Holidays on the bridge, people didn't hit it, so maybe we should put something on the bridge and change it every month or something.
We we talked about that, I said, we'll put hearts up for Shams. Shamrock's up for March, you know, put Easter, whatever.
So I think we came to a conclusion, right?
I said, end of report.
Okay, end of report, trustee O'Reilly.
Nothing.
Trustee Tanucci. Village manager's report. Okay, so I would like a a motion to go into executive session to discuss person personnel matters. Moved by trustee O'Connor, seconded by trustee Micho.
How 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 would we have known there was executive session?
Uh, well, it's 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 on the agenda that there's executive session, we can have call executive session, I need to call executive session tonight, Bobby, I have to.
We do need the roll call vote.
Yeah, we need a roll call vote, so.
Uh trustee O'Connor?
(laughing) I like
Thank you.
Trustee Micho, aye.
Aye.
Yeah, I'll, I'm trying.
Aye.
I'm sorry, I was talking, what are we? Aye.
Okay, so motion carried, okay. Now my challenge is gonna be, how do I, thanks Jeff.
All right, have a good night.
Bye.
Good night. What? Well, he was here for your ride.
Yeah, 'cause I didn't see him up there.
I I need to, uh, got a problem, how do I?
Way president, but I'm not sure.
Okay, so I'm gonna, um, go ahead and put us in executive session. Kritzmeyer, uh, uh, a second.
Really? It's worth looking at, it's not cheaper.
Break out.
No, there's
Great.
Oh, I understand, okay. I think it's coming in.
Can I make a fast request?
Yes.
Will we please get the device you put on a door hinge that closes the door to the bathroom, washroom, instead of it staying hanging open all the time with the toilet seat up?
I'll take care of that right away.
You walk in, you can walk in, the first thing you see is the toilet and the seat is usually up. You get these things, you know, you can put on a hinge, this is the door.
Automatic door closer, the spring.
Yeah, please, don't let it hit you in the seats around there.
All right, with that, somebody would like to make a motion to adjourn. By Trustee Michio?
Second.
Second by Trustee O'Connor, roll call please.
Trustee Michio.
Hi.
Trustee Brass.
Yes, please.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Aye.
Trustee Tanuti.
Aye.
All right, meeting adjourned. Good night, everyone.